All right, according to my iPhone, it is now seven o'clock, which is no doubt a coordinated universal time, so we'll go ahead and start the December 10th, 2012 Board of Alderman meeting. Start with the first thing, modifications to the agenda? Does anyone know of any modifications to our agenda? I see none. Mayor's comments? Start with that. The jury visioning project, that meeting is tomorrow, Tuesday, the 11th, at 6:00 P.M., and that's going to be at the O'Bannon Center. A lot of people will show up, take part in that, and I would invite everyone to come and see the final product as presented tomorrow night. Additionally, with my mayor's comments, I do want to take a few moments to announce that meetings will be run a little bit differently from here on out, and I'll explain the reason, and it's kind of long, and I apologize to Mr. Stafford, who asked that in brief. When I was an assistant prosecuting attorney, my goal was to not object a whole lot at that trial. I'm not a big objection person. And something I learned from Wayne is let people have their day in court, even though they can attest to clearly objectionable things, just let them say it. Let them have their word. And a lot of times, it would drive a judge nuts sitting up there when I'm not objecting to things that are clearly without relevance. And I've often ran our Board of Alderman meeting like that. I've always welcomed input from citizens throughout the entirety of the meeting. Wayne and I talked about this over a year ago. He told me, Andrew, you need to tighten up your meetings a little bit. We do have a section for citizen comments. Our citizen comments will run through all the other facets of our meetings. And Wayne said you need to tighten up the meetings a little bit so that they'll run smoother. The remainder of our meetings, it's for the Alderman, who has to deliberate things. And I think I'm going to try to move towards that. So I do ask, when it is time for citizen comments, feel free to tell us what you think. Feel free to give us input. But when we get down to other business, it's not an appropriate time for citizen comments at that point. It's time for the Board to discuss and to deliberate. You defer to our professionals that are here to assist us, our department heads, and make decisions on themselves. As always, though, and I don't mean to short-circuit anyone's attempt to be a part of government, feel free to contact your Alderman outside of the meeting. Feel free to contact your mayor outside of the meeting. We're happy to meet with constituents and partake in what we refer to as constituent servicing. So without further ado, I will open up the floor to citizen comments. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add?
Um, yes, actually. The problem with doing that that way is that when we come here, sometimes we don't have a question until we hear what's going on. And so I don't think that it's appropriate that you don't allow the... I don't think that any of the meetings have run... I've seen meetings where hardly anybody had anything to say, run just as long or just as short as ones where people do. So I think that you're kind of faulting the community to be involved in their city if you do that. I mean, obviously, the main part is right here, it's citizen's comments, but as you said, I don't have anything to ask, because you answered my question already with your mayor's comments. I may have a question later about something I don't understand that you guys are discussing up there. No, so I'm not sure if that's a good idea.
I understand.
That's all.
We're over a year and a half. I've ran it that way, and it's worked fine. And it's been mentioned to me by a few people, and a while back, for the sake of quick meetings and efficient meetings, and for meetings where our Alderman can deliberate and not be sidetracked. And sidetracked is probably a poor choice of words, but to stay unfocused in as much as what we're doing up here. If you have a question, and you know, you can contact me anytime.
I try to just listen, because sometimes you guys answer my question before I go and ask it. So will you be having more, another town hall meeting sometime soon after jury? Is there something that will be coming up that people can come to and ask a lot of their questions in?
Don't have to be scheduled as far as a public format, but I'm sure one will be forthcoming once we start realizing revenues for new sales tax. I plan on having an Alderman meeting, a special meeting, to look at what projects have been put on the table and where we want to invest those funds and how we want to move forward. And that'll be probably... I was going to have that after the first of the year, but it'll probably be around a little bit later sometime, discuss them and garner some opinion up here. We've already heard the voices of the citizens from our town hall meeting. And other suggestions are more than welcome. I've had a couple people approach me about a skate park, and I'm trying to get a meeting scheduled for that, to discuss skate parks, something that hadn't been brought to the table.
Okay. I would just like to say I object, I guess, to that. I think it's a bad idea, and it discourages citizens' involvement. But if we're going to do it, my suggestion would be to change the location of citizen comments to the end of the meeting, so that maybe they can comment on what we've discussed at the meeting.
Sure, not a problem. Any others? Yes, ma'am?
I actually have several. I want to refer to the letter that one of the Alderman wrote, or the councilman wrote to the newspaper in regards to several of the issues that have been going on. For those of you who haven't read it, I'm just going to read some parts of it. In regards to Christie's unfounded allegations to the Missouri Attorney General's office, that statement is false. Christie is not the only one who has made allegations to the Attorney General's office, and I'll say because I also did. And I'll be specific, because the letter also says, to be specific, "In the closed-meeting section of the Sunshine Lots, one of the public governmental body votes to meet a closed session. Members must cite an open session, this specific statute and subsection allowing the closure." The last council meeting, there was a request to make in a closed council meeting, and I specifically asked a reason. The statute was given, but the reason wasn't given. And so I filed a complaint to the Attorney General's Office in regards to Sunshine Lots, because I felt like I should have been able to be given the response as to what that closed session was for. My... The answer that I got was, "We don't have to tell you. We could be buying property."
I do believe it was that we needed to talk to our attorney about attorney finding confidential information.
But the subsection was never stated when I asked for it. And then the other part of this, you just said in your opening comments, "Feel free to contact your Alderman." And in here, it says that consistently being on the short end of a five-to-one council vote should cause one to look at their positions more closely, which disheartens me and concerns me that Ms. Horn is being told to vote against what the citizens have... The city are telling her that we like, and that are ideas. And so my concern is that this is encouraging her to not have a voice and not stand up for what the citizens of Buffalo have told her that we would like. And so I just have a concern about that. And I don't think that that's correct. You know, there's a comment about the old fogies getting it right, and I agree that there does come some knowledge with experience. But I think that new ideas and new comments and new suggestions are always welcome. They don't always have to be agreed upon. They don't always have to be right. But as citizens, we want our voice to be heard too, and that's what we're asking. And we're asking that our voice is heard without being told. You know, you're not always voting with everybody else, so start voting the way we are. It's kind of the way I read that. And then my next question is, the last council meeting, there was discussion about a ladder truck that was going to be donated to the city. And I came to the special meeting at the end of the month. There was outside conversation about that ladder truck before the meeting. However, there was never any discussion about the truck during the meeting, and so my question would be, what happened with that truck?
That would be a good question for our fire group, sir.
Hey, the guy that was going to purchase the fire truck didn't get the bid on the fire truck, and it's sold.
So the person that was going to donate it to the city didn't purchase it?
Right.
Okay. So it's unavailable to be donated to the city.
Those are my apologies.
Okay. I apologize. I didn't get your name.
Christine.
And your last name?
Abmeyer.
And you live here in the city?
I do.
Any other citizen comments? Yes, ma'am?
What I hear you and Wayne deciding is you don't want people to have any kind of interaction during the meetings unless they take this specific time, which we don't know what you're going to discuss tonight, other than in general, the topics that you provide on the panel. But you don't want us to be able to make any comments at all until a month or two months from now during your little see-citizen comments. That doesn't make sense to me.
Okay. I guess I could elaborate a little more. If you notice, at the very top of the agenda, it says Board of Alderman meeting. This is a meeting of the Board of Alderman. The Aldermen gather here to discuss business. It's... This isn't a town hall meeting. This is an opportunity for the Alderman to conduct business. And we're not going to put our fingers in our ears and shut you out for months at a time. Feel free to call me anytime. Feel free to call your Alderman anytime. If you hear something tonight, and we talk about closing a road, and you're against that, talk to your Alderman after meeting. Hey, I'm against closing that road. Call your Alderman. Hey, I'm against closing that road. We're not telling you we don't want to hear from you. What I'm saying is I would like to run the meeting a little tighter so that we can conduct business without having public discussion. All right? Any other questions?
I don't feel like there's ever been a problem we discuss and deliberate much more than anyone in the audience ever interjects. I mean, that takes up more of the time than I've ever... I mean, since I've been coming to meetings for over a year, I've never seen any problems. So I'm in agreement.
Yeah, it's...
And I wasn't asked about this. This is the first time hearing you have this change.
I guess, I'm reading my contribution here, is our group spends about $450,000, $500,000 in discretionary income spending in Buffalo. So we're taking that and just figuring it out. And to hear that kind of a strategy, again, against the five-to-one, I don't think that's what a public official really wants to do, shut the public down. The comments of all the meetings I've been to have been pretty open, pretty short, addressed within a minute or two, and you move on. But to come up with a strategy that says, well, let's tighten it up, that's an excuse for covering my ass. We don't really want to have a whole lot of people say things that we're discussing. I don't... It just doesn't smell... It doesn't pass the smell test.
I understand.
Yeah, I agree.
And it's my attempt to make this a more efficient meeting.
Have you ever been to a general assembly? Did the general assembly women in session?
Yes, I do.
And you commented?
Yes, I did. I got to speak on the floor.
Okay, but they asked you.
Yes.
But when they're in the middle of a session, from the gallery out there, when they're discussing something, you don't raise your hand?
You're comparing apples and oranges.
No, I'm not. I'm not comparing apples.
If this was the state house...
Have you been to a school board meeting?
No, I have not.
That's exactly the way the school board does. You got every chance to express your opinion, but this is a Board of Alderman meeting, and it's for us to discuss. And if you're in my zone, you're free to come and talk to me about the situation, but Board of Alderman meeting is not an appropriate place to have a town hall. You're entitled to your opinion. You've given it. I've given mine. Now let's move on.
Again, that's what I'm saying. That's your opinion, but is that the people of the city? Is that their opinion that want to come to this meeting?
Well, put your name on the ballot. I'm coming up. If you want to, if you're in my zone, I welcome you running.
Okay, I'm putting my name on the ballot tomorrow. I'm running for Ward Three. And personally, and my idea, everybody in this town has a voice. Everybody should be heard. It is not you guys that make the town. It is us as a people, as a community, that make this town run. If it wasn't for us, y'all wouldn't have these jobs. And you shutting us out like this is wrong.
Nobody is shutting you out.
Yeah, we're not shutting it. You're having your voice heard right now.
Yeah, I am. But you're wanting to change it. I come here just to listen in and sit in and learn what this is all about, because I am running. And I've never done it before, but I can't just sit here and keep my mouth shut. This is... The way you're doing it is wrong.
Well, for proper decorum, once we leave citizen comments, I would ask for a forum. And I don't want this to be a Jerry Springer show.
It's not going to be a Jerry Springer show. I'm putting in how I feel like everybody else did.
Just a quick show of hands, how many people have called me outside of a meeting? Was it difficult? Were you able to communicate with me and get answers?
I would say that I think I understand the closed comments. I didn't need to know about the naked guy in the shower in the camper that was... Went on for about 10, 15 minutes the last meeting. Those kinds of things. I would agree, this is not the place for that. And I think there have been several of those in the last couple of months, and so I would agree that those things don't need to mention.
But did he speak up under citizen comments?
I don't think so.
If he were to speak up in citizen comments, that's fine. That's what citizen comments are for. Yes, ma'am?
However, isn't there a little bit more public accountability if we're able to bring it up openly in front of the reporter and our other common citizens to you, as opposed to off the phone? You can squelch the idea back before you ever bring it here.
You can bring it up at citizen comments. If you don't like the Locust Street.
Yes, but what happens if you guys bring up something after citizen comments? I mean, we can't say anything until the next month?
Well, what I'm going to do is I'm going to put citizen comments off the end of the agenda. I'll address it again at the end of this meeting, and here and after, it'll be at the end of the agenda. Is that okay?
I don't know. I don't know what the general population feels about it, but I was just curious.
Are there any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
I've never called you, because you and I apparently don't get along face to face. Why would I want to call you?
I get along with you fine.
Because you've been pretty hateful and snotty to me before.
I've been nothing but friendly to you, despite the fact that...
So I don't feel like I can call you up and talk to you about anything.
Ma'am, you threatened to assault me at one point in time, and I smiled and I was...
When did I threaten to assault?
At the town hall meeting, you said if there were a legal way for me to punch you, I would.
I did not.
And I just kind of chuckled, and we went about our business.
I did not ever say that.
You most certainly did too, ma'am.
No, I most certainly did not.
I'm sure you didn't mean it, but at any rate...
I did not.
You're welcome to contact me by telephone or stop by the law office if I'm there, or stop by City Hall if I'm here. Anytime, I'd be happy to make time for your concerns.
You're a liar.
Fair enough. Are there any other citizen comments?
That didn't go well, did it?
I've been called worse things.
I don't mean that.
Any other citizen comments? All right? Yes, sir?
I think the aesthetic committee did an excellent job downtown on the decorations and the program they put on up there.
How was the downtown association?
Downtown Association did an excellent job up there.
Yes, it was wonderful.
Very well entertaining. Very good.
They work very hard to do that in the art walk every year, amongst other.
They did a good job.
Anything else for citizen comments?
I have one brief thing. I just wanted to say that I do think that your YMCA park proposal is a very good idea or the idea with the pool, because they've already got someone who ran the pool and knows the whole, you know, geography area, just knows everything about all that, and I think they could run it very efficiently and take a lot of extra funds off the city's end that way. So that was just... I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. It's nice to hear it, ma'am. All right, anything further? All right, we'll move on to minutes and bills.
I would just like to point out one thing as far as the bills go. Once again, we're paying Mr. Chief for mileage when I know that we do have a truck available for him to use. We've paid him $1,027.97 since the Locust Street project started. I think that it might be cheaper to just let him use a city vehicle. Stop paying him mileage.
And that might be a good idea, but when you look at the grander scheme of things, and the cost-benefit of him having to drive over to the street shed and/or have one of Rogers' guys deliver a truck to him, and the man-hours it takes to switch from one vehicle to another, plus the gasoline the city has to pay for its own vehicles, plus the wear and care on its own vehicles, et cetera, et cetera, it may end up being washed. I don't know. I haven't spent thousands of dollars on the cost-benefit analysis of that.
I don't think it would take that. I'm just going to point out that what we pay him a month is almost as much as both of my part payments, so that's just my suggestion. And then I will make a motion that we approve minutes and bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
I will follow the rule.
Jane. Jane?
Hi.
Larry?
Jim?
Yes. Wayne?
Aye.
That motion passes? Committee reports, the budget committee.
I handed out a report to, I think, almost everyone in the audience, as well as everyone sitting up here. I gave it to Debbie as well. It just kind of goes over what we've been discussing. We've had two meetings thus far, Mr. Hicks and myself, with the help of this administrative assistant, the near Mrs. Holston. She has been very helpful. She's going to look into a few ideas that we had had that might be possible money-saving options, paperless billing for setting out water bills and tax bills. That would be an option, opt-in program, like if anybody else pays bills online, we usually opt into those, it's not mandatory. Though YMCA park proposal would be similar to what we did with the pool and hopefully save the city additional money. The park or the pool also saved us $1,300 a year in running the pool. And then raising insurance deductibles, that was an idea that was presented to me. I don't know very much about insurance, but I put it on the list, and Debbie said she would look into it. There were some other ideas as far as saving money. Debbie, I didn't have this one on the last meeting. Larry also about suspending the cleaning of uniforms. It's something I noticed whenever I got my council package, so I included it here. And then I included some ideas that we had discussed for budgeting for the capital improvement tax. One in particular that I would like to point to is investing in our fire department. We have... It's kind of lacking, and I... From my understanding, in 2015, we'll have an inspection. Is that correct, Chief?
Yeah.
We'll have an inspection, and the state of our fire department sets all of our homeowner insurance rates and business insurance rates. And there's the potential that those rates could go up if we don't address some situations that we have at the fire department. So I think that in order to save the citizens some money, in a few years, it would be wise to do that. And then I included some other things that you can all read and that you've all seen as well. And I welcome any ideas from the Board or citizens. If you have ideas, we can use them.
Mayor, may I ask you?
Yes, please.
In November, you appointed three people on the Budget Committee. One resigned. Two others...
Back up, Jim. One did not accept, because the one was told, you know, "I guess I'm from the old school. You don't tell me, and I'm going to serve on committee." You asked...
I scored your paper.
I know, but I'm quoting live, in person, one-on-one. And due to that fact, two things is that I don't get told. The second thing is, the budget itself had been approved and voted on by the council for the coming year. So my personal opinion was that it was not time to go in and re-change, it was time to do other things. So that was the reason it ended up with two very capable people, very person... And the reason I did not accept. Questions asked. I did not resign. I did not accept.
He's not the sole.
Okay.
In November, they appointed three people. One did not want it. Two others, according to my information, did not want to serve on the Budget Committee. Which fair, this time, I'll volunteer to join these, Larry and Christie, on the Budget Committee, on the on the Budget. We wanted three, and I'll volunteer to...
I thank you for volunteering, and I will hereby appoint you to that committee. Maybe we'll future notices of meetings, et cetera, et cetera. All right, thank you. All right, anything further with our budget? All right, Department head reports, administration.
Any questions?
Oh, I did have something, Debbie, I'm sorry. You had mentioned in your report about looking into creating a new comprehensive plan for the city, and I have been in contact with Joanna Hubbard from MSU. She is the program coordinator for citizenship and service learning, and they coordinate classes where they have students, such as the jury students, come and participate in these things. A professor, Jim Katz, is a... He's a professor in the political science department, and he thinks that he may be able to develop a service learning project to assist us in creating a new comprehensive plan. So if that's something that we're interested in, I have the information.
So is Dr.?
Jim Katz, K-A-A-T-Z.
That's a... Is he through Missouri State?
Yes, MSU.
Okay. If you can give me his information, I'll contact him and develop that. See what we can add.
I don't mind working on it. It's all right.
I've got a degree from this department. I have a couple of minutes there. All right, thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Holston? I see none. All right, animal control.
I do not hear any additions to the report that you have in front of you or any answers to questions.
Are there any questions for animal control? I see building inspector, inspector, building inspector, sir?
I don't really have much to add. I'm a little bit tired. I'm not as much as I expected. I'm last year, thirty, I have yourself, I would do it for you. That's how I have to say it.
Are there any questions for our building inspector? All right, our fire department, sir?
I just got two things off the report. We got our gear from the grant. Got a five set of them here. I'd like to thank Debbie for helping out with that. That should be finalizing pretty soon. We just got to get some pictures with it and get it in service. And then the storm siren down on Chesapeake, I guess there's been some calls about that. All the parts are being ordered and being fixed. The insurance sent a check for it. I don't have a date yet for when it'll be fully fixed, but all the parts are on order, and he's trying to get it done. So he'll be down for probably another month.
Why?
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 Because he's got to order the parts.
Coming by mule train?
The what?
They're coming by mule train?
I have no idea.
That's too long. That's, you know, that's not acceptable in here. We have a siren down for a full month in a tornado season. It looks to me like somebody should move and get those parts here some way as soon as possible. This is not something that is something to be smeared of. This is life endangerment, and it should be repaired. And you should get on it, and you should tell them that you want the parts and you want it repaired.
I've already done that. I mean, he's... He's got to order the parts too. I mean...
They're on back order from China. We're kind of at the mercy... They're on back order from China. We're kind of at the mercy of things we can't control.
If I could go out there and fix it, I'd have to... Since November, beginning of November, end of October, beginning of November.
November's 12 days. End of October's 32, 42. I think you ought to move somebody. I'm serious about it. I think it's a serious condition that needs to be looked after immediately.
I mean, what do you want me to do?
What would I do?
I mean, what do you want me to do? I mean, because I can't make him...
I would probably never talk with him again, or I'd find somebody else that could fix it. I'm sure there's not just one company that can fix a siren, I'm saying about...
Not very many.
Don't care.
Unless we want to buy a brand newer.
We need to look at what the situation is. These are life problems. These are not... This is a life-threatening situation. And I don't want to sit here on this board and have a small tornado or a small damage go through town and someone be injured and hurt because we didn't get up and do our job. You get on the phone in the morning, and if you can't do it, you give me the phone number of the individuals that are capable of repairing this. Let's see if we can get some...
Any other questions for our Fire Department? Police Department, sir?
We have the fault report, 107, and 71 type of five-vehicle accidents. Four to four to three arrests, consisting of eight warrants, stealing possession of vehicles. Seven developed robberies. Two each of driving on a fast course before the crash. And then wanting to keep them dead and shooting an option. Paying five thousand for the enforcement.
Any questions for our Two, the Police? Yes, sir?
Sam, how many reserve officers do you have? Were you contacted by the Downtown Association to help with the parade? Thursday, did they call you and ask you to help with the parade, the crowd controlling?
Yeah.
Would you tell them you didn't have enough manpower?
I wouldn't watch him. I just put that thing in the top of the list. And then leave the parade party. I'm assuming the possible leader of the circus at the work is David.
So your reserve officers, you just didn't employ them up to help? They were here? Well, where were they? You normally use reserve officers for parade and traffic, not to make arrests because they don't have that.
They were up in the intersection, walking around.
By themselves, not with another police officer? It's amazing. I didn't see a lot of them up in the intersection.
Any other questions for our Police Chief? Street Water Department, sir?
I have nothing. I only have three reports we've done. We just did a... Well, we got the airport all finished. They had all done. And all the neck breaks. It's all worked good, it's here. But we only have seven with us. We did so good.
Glad a truck would have helped with that.
They'll be a little ton. Black truck would be nice. They'd have everything.
The county's pretty good about loaning us theirs.
And then the Invar, they always have to. Invar, in fact, Invar put them up here. They work out pretty good.
Any questions of Roger? Wastewater, oh, sorry, Tax Question Report.
Any questions?
No questions. Wastewater Treatment Plan, sir?
I guess, sent me up here today. Something in the last meeting, he told me that there was 38,000 feet of sewer line for VSIC to do. And he said you guys didn't vote on it for approval. He didn't know. For, there's 38,000 more feet of sewer line, and that would be a third. If the city was broke down in three sections, that would be one year completed of cambered and cleaned. He said at the last meeting that you didn't vote yes. You didn't vote yes or no as a whole.
I think we approved an amount. He had a section of line, even though it didn't issue.
That's right. How much did we approve?
Last time, sir, I believe, was around 13,000.
That's right. That's what we approved to be done.
But this is not... For that second phase.
Nothing about the third phase until we did the second phase, I guess. Was approved. Contract was been lifted by our attorney. If he approved it, you already had the job, I said.
I think the question was whether the city had to go out and bid again.
Had we did, or we continue with that?
Since the city had just bid this contract and it was a continuation.
And we're working on that.
So we did what was asked. We did the 13,000, 12,500, 13,000 in the Phase Two. Nothing was being brought up about Phase Three until we did the first two phases in operation.
I'm just doing them on the man open. See...
That's fine. For clarification, we did approve another 12,500 or 13,000 feet of contracts and the feds.
Nineteen thousand five hundred.
It was 13,000 feet or 19,500?
Nineteen thousand five hundred.
That's how much money?
13,000 feet.
So the minute, November 26th, by here.
Anything else, sir?
That's about all I got.
Any questions for Darren?
I had one question, just for my own part. Did, was the EPA mandating a third adapt to be done in a year?
They wanted... The way I take it from him, they wanted us to set... They wanted us, three years. To have the whole city looked at would be fantastic. Four years, eh. Five years, you should have it done. Is the way I take it he was talking about.
We can start doing that with our camera. Right now, we're looking on active bulk of the I-9 block through this gentleman's camera work and through our contract. Have that repaired. So we're trying to get the mask used, the mask being repaired. And then when that's done, you guys can get out with a gust of camera and start trying to get that third in. Your first year will be easy because you'll have a portion of it already contracted out. My advice is you guys need to learn how to use that camera. And Roger would be more happy to send you some manpower to help get that done. Right, Roger?
Again.
All right. Any other questions? All right, Water Adjustments.
I'll make a motion and approve Water Adjustments.
Is there a second?
I'll listen.
I'll call for a vote.
Larry.
Hi.
Christie. James.
Hi.
Jess. Jim.
All right. New Business License.
We didn't have any.
None?
We left it on the agenda instead of putting it on.
That was easy. Old business. We don't have anything listed on it. I'll move to New Business Audit Presentation. I have a feeling the guy behind the front row is here now.
That's me.
I'll go there.
I'm Worrier Brown. I'm Cardinal Davidson of the CPAs. I'm screwed. Please, they did your audit for the year in September of 2012. And I believe all of you have been given a copy of the audit report. It's about 51 pages long. I really don't want to go through every page. If you would like me to summarize it... There are only about four pages. We've got our opinion, which states that we audited the financials of the city, and they are reported for general except for the technical. It's basically a clean opinion. Everything that should be in the report is in the report. All the schedules, all the findings, all the disclosures. That's on Page Four and Five. But there are really only four pages that I think are pretty interesting that I think about, just to summarize so you can see what happened during the year ending September 30th, 2012. If you go to pages, start with page number 17, and then two more back to 19. Page 17 shows you your two governmental funds. The General Fund, which has your administrative, the police, the fire, most of your departments are in the General Fund. The Transportation Fund is also shown there. So the first page, page 17, shows you the balance sheets as far as assets, liabilities, and fund equity of those two funds. Assets of the General Fund, you ended the year with $401,782. Liabilities of around $55,000, ending with a fund balance of $346,000. That fund balance went down by about $185,000 in one year. Your total revenues of a little over a million dollars, they were down by $700,000. Almost all of that decrease was because you had the FEMA grants in the prior year, which was $650,000. You did not have those different grants, grant funds for this past year. As far as the expenditures in the General Fund, the expenditures totaled to be about $1.3 million, the same as the prior year. If you take out the FEMA safe out, safe out in the project that you had. So what that tells you is that you're losing about $185,000, $200,000 a year in your General Fund, and you've only got about $100,000 in equity for that one. So if you continue to spend as you did this last year, two years, you'll be in a General Fund, no funds available. Beside that, you can see the Transportation Fund, and you got a total revenues there of $297,000 just for your sales tax that went for three projects. During the year, you spent $444,000. Most of that was a big sidewalk project that was going. So that one decreased your Transportation Fund by $146,000. So right now, it's still in good shape, but it's the same thing. If you've got about $600,000 there now, if you continue to lose or spend that much over the next two or three years above what you're taking in, it's going to be a problem there. Now, I told you two pages, Page 17 and Page 19. Page 19 just detailed the revenues as far as the categories to show exactly what revenues that you had for the year. And as I said, there were really not a lot of differences in those, other than the fact that you didn't have a break. The other big fund that you have is detailed on Pages 21 and 22. And that's your Water and Sewer Fund. Now, the assets are pretty large in the Water and Sewer Fund. We've got $9.5 million, but that's because all of the assets for the sewer wastewater system, water system are included and depreciated like a regular business. You had a total of $9.5 million, of which $548,000 is actually spendable dollars, actually in cash for the receivables. You had another million dollars that was in strictly reserved, restricted for your bond revenue bonds you had. I think you do have some project money there that's about $500,000 that was left over from the last fund we should have been able to have, which still continues. Liabilities, $4.4 million. That is your 2000 Water and Sewer Bonds and your 2007 Water and Sewer Bonds. That's one item that I think you might want to look into if you have them already. On the total layer of the $3.8 million in revenue bonds, which we issued five, six, seven years ago, you're paying anywhere from 4% to 6% on those bonds. I think 5.75% is the highest as it goes through your payment. We've seen so many of our governmental units that have refunded those because the interest rates are so low. You know, I... Something that we don't, we're not recommending a particular firm do that. We're not... We see a lot of them. But I'm surprised that someone hasn't contacted you already, say, hey, just refund this, because they get a fee for doing that. But it does save you money if you can refund those revenue bonds. So there's also leasing you have for the water tank that has about $120,000 remaining on that. So net assets, $5.1 million. Again, that's all wrapped up with the system here. You can't go and convert it into cash. I know a lot of people out there who are buying the Water and Sewer System. So overall, the Water and Sewer Fund for the year lost, anyway, lose, but just had expenditures more than your revenues, about $20,000. As I said about refunding, whether it might be a good idea to refund some of those bonds, that's really a lot of the decrease you had in the Water and Sewer Fund was because your interest rates weren't bouncing up. You had bought a few assets as far as the restricted funds for the bond, appreciation and replacement, regular reserves, principal and interest, those things. But if the interest rates get cut in half, then your interest rates, you know, your score is going to drop as far as income they have of. So overall, you had water revenue of about $327,000. You had sewer revenue of about $610,000. Sanitation, $351,000. And then interest income of $141,000, which was $20,000 less than what you had in the prior year. Overall, the actual bottom line Water and Sewer, the net loss, is $10,595,000. It's not bad. That's as far as the revenues. I know you mentioned earlier that you had new sales tax, I guess, in this past year. But that's what kind of sales tax?
Yeah, capital.
Okay, so that's good. That's what we're talking about, Transportation. This one, you're not, you know, as far as a business having assets, appreciating assets, things like that, your Water and Sewer Fund is looking for capital. That's not something, you know, if you're supposed to go even, we go to a lot of cities, and that's the biggest loss that they have. If they don't have electric funds, they're not going to use it. If you take the General Fund, losing $185,000, I mean, more expenditures than revenues, and Transportation down $146,000, Sewer just at $10,000, that gives you a whole decrease in equity for the year, $343,000. So as far as our comments, really, the departments, the budget, things like that, for where your General Fund is going to end. You'll have some real looking at. That's a quick run through. I mean, there's another 47 pages here. If you got the areas you have in the report, I'll leave for a few days. I'm sorry, I got into the Friday and Monday report package.
I just had mine tonight, right? I have other questions.
I'm sorry. But yeah, we try to be sure, get those two before we... I thought I had them, at least over the weekend, so that they can come up with a question. Do you have some questions or areas that I might be able to...
Colin Dunbar is such a guy that... Our actual energy rate is...
Well, I'll just check into it because I didn't think we were paying that high interest because of the subsidy.
It could be if you have an involved fund, that they do, state set up another program where they set bonds. If they loan, you had a million dollars in mind, they were actually issuing another million dollars in mind. Give them some, and then pay it back to you.
Always a same success.
And so that's just the state of rates that's on the bond issue. So that may be the reason we have no...
Yeah, I think it's subsidized to where it's down to. I think I figured it about a year ago for Andrew. I thought it was right at less than 2%, but I will check that out. With that subsidy, subsidy shows up as interest income, and then we still have a full expense on our bills. Which is what he's looking at as a full expense, but we have an interest income coming in.
And that may be why nobody's...
Yeah, but I will double check that.
We did look into that.
Well, I mean, I could look into the rates, and like I said, I will double check that. I already will just double check and see what rate we're paying, and if there's a better option.
Any other questions? Sir, we thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Capital Improvement Projects. Something I mentioned at the last meeting, the notion of continuing to move forward with projects and to think about what we want to do. I had a meeting with Danny Andrell. He said he has an opportunity to go work on projects in Lebanon. Danny's highly skilled and very good about what he does. And I would certainly like to hold on to Danny to move forward, to work on future project sidewalks. Capitalize on his expertise, but I... And what, uh, capitalize on his expertise, but I just want the board to be conscious and aware of, of, uh, how, where do we want to go? And maybe we don't want to do it.
I personally still want to wait until Locust Street is finished to know exactly what it costs us.
Oh, sir.
And, and then, because we're paying that, John, almost twenty-five hundred dollars a week. For those forms, and, and so I, I personally wanted to step that, use Locust Street, cut the ribbon on it, make sure we know what we've done the last time. Make sure that, uh, by not bidding it and doing this, uh, that we made a wise decision or could we have been better off if we had bid it and paid it and waited late? The things that we would never know is if we'd have contracted it, all the equipment would have been commissioned by the contractor and our equipment would still be in awful good shape. Instead of having some of the damage that we, that are now that we will replace. So those things I would really like to talk about, look at, I'd like for Roger to look and give us an idea of what it's going to cost to repair the damages to the equipment that we had on that particular job site. So we can step back and look, say, uh, we can be better fit to do the prevailing, whatever it is, rather than to hire seven people, be responsible for, not, not knowing if they're, what the situation is. So that's my opinion. I'm just like, I was one of the citizens here, but I would like to look, step back. This, this project is, this was a major project for us. Make sure that we spend it well. I'm sure it's going to be a beautiful street, it's going to be a great asset to the community. But I just want to make sure that we spend our money wisely for that block of junk. And look at the next.
I would agree with you. I think the streets look amazing. Um, and if, if we wait until we are finished, then we can take the cost of that. And we can, we can get bids on doing another section of the street and see if it's competitive, um, and less of a headache to go ahead and bid it out. Uh, and I would also like to suggest that we not use any of the capital improvement money for sh, any transportation related items because we have a fund for that. We have a transportation tax that funds those, um, improvements and I, I would like to see us use the capital improvement money in other areas, that we cannot use the transportation funds.
Yeah, we've got a couple of things that we've committed to. It's not any. We've committed to buy a sidecar for twelve five.
And that's, that's something we can use or fund through the capital improvement.
Something like that. We've, we've got some other things. Uh, we're still thinking, I mean, we're still, have not made a decision on the rail street property. We're waiting for the, we're waiting for the county to, uh, to acquire the state property and have it bid and then tell us what they're willing to take for it. At that time, we'll either pass it or go purchase it. And it's, it's a guess that what that piece of property will appraise at. And that should come out of our capital improvements, even though it will be, uh, spent in the street depart, for street department. So I just kind of think we need to just kind of sit back for thirty days. It's, it ought to be done in January, sometime in January. Weather permitting, Locust Street be finished and just lay back and then come back up and let's, let's really look, let's, we'll, we'll know. We'll have a better understanding of our budgets. We'll have a better understanding of what we're going to spend and I think all the council people here, uh, sure want the, want us to go forward with any projects that we can. But we want to make sure that, uh, we don't overspend what we would like to have. We're still a small town and we have a great ideas, what we'd like to have. I think just as far as the capital improvements, uh, I don't think any, but I think we're going to have a lot of things we're going to want to do. We're sure, the Christmas list will be very small. The ones will be more than we can, let's wait that, let's wait till we finish it. Go step back and say, well, this is exactly what it cost us. We got this much money and now let's go again. We did, we did the Locust Street in a hurry, little by, we did a great job. It's been done great. We'd never know if it was high or low, but it will be done.
I mean, we'll, we'll have an idea on everything, sir. And, and what I think will be prudent before we, we consider another major project is, is we do that, that we, we, we bid it out and, and decide.
You can always turn and bid back.
Right. And, and if we think we can do it in-house for less, uh, or, or equal to what it's going to bid for, then maybe we consider that. Uh, but, but the problem with bidding it out is we can't simply put in the paper road project, go with the bids. We're going to need engineering and specifics and we're to give.
If we bid it, we're going to have to spend all that money. If we do it on our own, we don't have to spend that capital either, like, of engineers.
We spent money on engineering for this project, probably for the next one.
Well, there, there are certain projects we can do with that, without engineering. And, and, and my thought was, and, 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 and as I was talking about, jumping into another major project, something as simple as, as, as what Mr. Piper came to me a while back, this sidewalks.
So we did. The engineers.
And we don't, we don't necessarily need Mr. Cantrell to do that because we did Main Street without him as well.
We might come to the point that we need to go out there and buy some, uh, aluminum forms. So we'll have the forms to go on sidewalks with.
Right, right.
There's, there's some things we need to be able to, to add into. We need to be able to deal with all the department works and kind of bounce around with the weapons. Where the city to go, if it was going to go broke.
That, that sounds reasonable.
I've got a, I've got a discussion. After listening to the auditor, I'm almost afraid to bring mine up. But, you know, in two thousand and five, the city gave all the city employees a small token of appreciation for their, for their work throughout the year. And I don't think, I think everybody that works for the city gives us a year of interest, all, everybody, if a department heads down to it. So, I mean, two thousand and five, they give everybody a gift certificate to Wood Supermarket. And the way I understand it, they did it that way rather than Woods because if they give it to, I mean, rather than Walmart, because if they give it to Woods, the dollars stay in the city, rather than being one of those kind of people. This would have to come out of the general fund. We've got thirty-seven employees. Figures have to be, and that's the total of our, our employees, and it's just one amount, it becomes a nine-ounce dollar figure.
For how much?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five dollars? Times thirty-seven, it's just nine hundred and twenty-five, right? Twenty-five dollars.
Well, maybe you're right. So it's not that much money. But I would like to put that into a motion that we ask Gary to, 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 to Woods and not Haywood's because they wait in many states within our, within our city.
What's the best technically I'd be, because it's something that wasn't on the agenda. I don't think, and it involves spending money. I don't think we've, we've voted on it, but I think if all we all are the same, uh, that they're for that. If everyone's in agreement, I, under my discretionary, uh, I can support that.
Well, if that's what it takes, I won't put it into motion, but I'd be for it. I'd guess a strong vote.
I have no problem. I have no problem.
I just, I'm still concerned about the budget. Just, I mean, auditor confirmed everything that I was concerned about. It's nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. I think I've come up with sixteen thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars possible savings. And I wouldn't be opposed to it, but I still am concerned about our general revenue, so. It's Christmas.
Well, that's the thing. I could see, I don't think, it is, it's just, it's a token of moral appreciation about the employees of the land of our city.
We'll go ahead and go on. And, uh, Debbie, I mentioned to you today about having, uh, Christmas dinner, uh, like we've had in the past. Would be a burden to plan something for, uh, city employees.
This light, yeah, that will do what you, what you want to do.
We don't have to have, you know, we can just get ice cream.
I mean, we can do it, but.
That's, that's the point in the meeting where we dance. I'm sorry.
He didn't say get up, so we didn't.
In the past, we, I mean, the board members have been the ones that paid, I think, maybe twenty dollars a person. I don't even know. But there's just nine more business stages of Christmas, so, but we can pull it off if that's what you want.
Yeah, I throw in a wedding together for us, and we can serve it. Serve it. All right.
I apologize for.
Last thing we have on new business, uh, December special meeting falls on a holiday. Uh, do we want to reschedule that or cancel it altogether? I believe if we cancel it altogether, that's going to save us thirty-five dollars for August. Is that correct?
Make a motion to cancel it. Make a motion.
I'll serve you.
All those in favor, which, uh?
Aye.
All right, we'll go ahead and cancel. Is there anything else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I do ask you. In April, we're going to elect a new mayor. And, uh, I'd like to ask if we put on the agenda for our next meeting, uh, a discussion of the mayor's salary. I don't know how the board feels, but I know the mayor makes two hundred and thirty dollars a month. Three, three and a half. And the mayor does an awful lot, like this mayor, and I would assume that whoever elected the mayor in April, and as you well know, if we don't set the salary required to the election, whoever is elected mayor, uh, can, uh, take a new salary. So I don't know how the board feels about it, but I would took the election, had that on the agenda for the next meeting to discuss. I think they better do that down from seventy to what they're going to create.
I think it's seventeen thousand a year.
About seventeen thousand.
I mean, I have to, it was like thirteen thousand.
You know, you're.
I just pulled out a little.
You're not adverse to this situation to decrease as well as to increase.
It's whatever the board.
I didn't want to go in there and have to make a decision on the raise.
We need to talk about it. I'd like, I'd just like to have it on the agenda so that we can make that decision. Prior to the election.
All right. And before, uh, we entertain a motion, uh, to, uh, to conclude our meeting, I did state I would open, uh, open it up for citizen comments again. Are there any citizen comments? I, uh, Xena, I'll welcome the floor.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.